Good evening and welcome. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, April 23rd, 2020. Welcome to all the council members and staff and to all the residents of Marion who are joining us online. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and we've asked Councilmember Goodella to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have the roll call, please?
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Abu Asli?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Yeah.
Ms. Goodelia?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
Thank you. This time we have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. First on our agenda, we have a proclamation today in honor of Arbor Day and I will read the proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Forensics that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first adjourned with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of topsoil by wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life, giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas Marion is well-known for its tree-lined streets and parks and has been recognized as a Tree City USA community. And whereas Arbor Day activities have been carried out all over the United States since 1872 for promoting efforts to plant and maintain trees for their many benefits. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abu Asli, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 24th, 2020, as Arbor Day in the City of Marion and urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and support tree planting efforts and encourage citizens to plant trees for present and future generations. I would just add that our city has been a Tree City USA for, Parks Director Carolyn can correct me, is it 24 years in a row?
Actually, 27 years.
27 years? Okay, well, that's even better. So, thank you to you and your department and our entire city for caring about trees and their value to our community. So, thank you for everything.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
If I could, I'd like to just mention what we're doing for Arbor Day this year.
Go ahead.
For Arbor Day, we're doing what we're calling Arbor Day at Home this year. And what we're pushing out and promoting is an ID Your Tree Challenge. What we'd like our citizens to do around the community is to go out and take a selfie of you and your favorite tree, either in your yard or neighborhood, and then post that or send that photo to us. We'd like you to ID your tree and then send that ID info into our city arborist, Mike Simprich. We'll take those through April 30th. All the entries that we receive will be eligible for a random drawing that we're going to hold and we've got some plant, a tree swag that we're going to have. We've got some uptown dollar certificates that we're going to give away. And then we have a grand prize that we're going to give a one-and-a-half-inch caliber tree away as a grand prize to a citizen and along with that, we'll assist the planting of that tree with our forestry staff.
That's terrific. Will there be information we can share on social media about this?
Yes. Yes. All the information associated with the event will be on the city website. It'll be on Facebook. We also did a news release for it today, so all that information is out there and available now.
That's terrific. Thank you to you and our city forestry team and again, your entire team for all you do for our city.
Thank you.
Okay. That was it for proclamations for this evening. At this time, we have a public forum which is reserved for comments from the public on topics listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. If there are comments associated with a public hearing, there would be time during the public hearing to make such comments. And then there is another opportunity for any comments on any topic at the end of the meeting. So at this time, we have a public forum for comments from the public on topics that are on the agenda but not associated with the public hearing. Have we received any comments? So we'll ask the city clerk if she's received any comments in writing.
Yes, I did receive an email today.
Okay. Will you read that for us, please?
Yep. It's from Linda Miller. She lives at 4,001 North 10th Street. This is in regards to number 10 under the regular agenda engineering section. She states that 10th Street is a very busy main thoroughfare. Standing at that intersection, it is obvious that this would be a terribly congested area. People do use the sidewalks to cross at that intersection. Houses appear to be very near the sidewalk and the street. Building a walk over similar to what is located at First Avenue and 27th Street in Cedar Rapids or some kind of walk under tunnel. Keep in mind that Marion appears to have a very high water table, would negatively affect the character of the neighborhood at that intersection. The roundabout is a bad idea. The traffic lights, though expensive, fit the character of the neighborhood and provide safety. The roundabout on 29th Avenue in Marion, that was supposed to be a full-size, at least has a lot of open area around it, providing an open field of vision on the right and left. Even though you put that mini roundabout on a main thoroughfare, it is tough to get around. When you're older, your joints don't move like they used to and you drive a large vehicle. I hope that Marion did not sell the property that you bought for that intersection because traffic is likely to increase on 29th. She says, "Don't get me wrong, roundabouts are fine in the newer areas of Marion when they are in an open area and are full-size like the roundabout on Tower Terrace." That's it.
Is someone going to be getting in contact with Ms. Miller? Or, I don't know if we? What the process?
I forwarded the email to engineering. I'm sure Mike Barkal or someone from his staff will reach out.
Sure. And, yeah. I will just add that I was involved from the time that 29th Avenue Roundabout was authorized by the council and at no time was that intended to be a full roundabout. It was always intended to be a mini roundabout. The purchase of the property around it was not associated with the construction of the roundabout. It was for future expansion, but that roundabout was always intended to be a mini roundabout. And there's some misunderstanding in the community about that because it is a recurring comment that's made that it was supposed to be a full roundabout. But I don't know the source of that. It probably has to do with the fact that the houses were purchased around the same time. And so it created that impression, I think. But we just need to correct that, I think, for people that it was always intended from inception to be a mini roundabout. Okay. Any other comments from the public in this public forum?
I have not received any others.
Okay. So then we will proceed with the consent agenda with Ms. Atkins. And if the seconds, like we had in the prior meeting, if the person who made the prior motion would make the second, unless, you know, they have objection to that, it would be helpful for process. So, and go ahead, Ms. Atkins.
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through F1, Resolutions 28393 through 28399.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilmember Atkins and seconded by Councilmember Brandt to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through F1, Resolutions 28393 through 28399. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is approved. For the next section, I will turn over the meeting to Mayor Pro Tem Jensen.
Hey, well. Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asli's abstention from voting and discussion as follows. The items A1 through F1, Resolutions 2840 and 28401, sorry, 28400 and 28401.
Second.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second to approve resolution numbers 28400 to 28401. Is there any discussion on any of these items? All those in favor of the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asli's abstention, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say no. The consent agenda is approved as presented. Meeting will now go back to the mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next thing on the agenda, we have a public hearing regarding the proposed fiscal year 2020 to 2021 budget. This was an item continued from the March 19th, 2020 meeting. We will open the public hearing and ask the city manager if he has a recap or a presentation on this.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. The, as you noted, this hearing was continued from March. The state gave us an extra 30 days to continue through the approval process for the city budget before it has to be submitted to the Department of Management. And so, as a little bit of a recap from Tuesday, the way that our funding usage breaks down, we always build the budget first, starting with the general fund because it's the single largest fund and funds the vast majority, I think, of the services that folks are familiar with, police, fire, city hall, parks and recreation, library, a lot of those ones that are your basic services you'll see from community to community. So, in the general fund, the budget anticipated for next year is 26.199 million, so just a hair under 26.2. When you break down the categories, public safety is 56.7% of that, followed by culture and recreation, general government, and then community and economic developments, with public works being the smallest of the general fund categories at 4.4%. The biggest single funding source for this is property taxes, about 16.5 million. They make up around 64% of the total income coming into the general fund. Second largest category is other financing sources. That's a variety of financing, things like franchise fees, being the single largest one that get lumped into that category. Charges for services and intergovernmental revenue come in there as well and we're anticipating a total amount coming in at 25.86 million. It is showing a bit of a deficit mainly due to one-time purchases for equipment for the new fire station when that will be opening. That's a strategic use of general fund reserves.
Okay. Is that the presentation?
No, I'm just waiting for the slide to change.
Oh, okay.
So in the general fund, the single biggest category, employees are the biggest driver of expenses in the general fund. Police departments are heavy on personnel and light on facilities. Fire departments, you have more facilities and also large numbers of personnel. But across the whole general fund, about 75% of total expenditures is related to personnel with another 10% going to contractual services. In our case, the largest contracts coming out of the general fund would be things like transit. So our contract with Cedar Rapids for transit services. But there are other contract services as well, like Marco that we pay for IT support. And then smaller categories for commodities, capital outlays, et cetera. It does contain funding for some new positions and reclassifications of some existing positions. We have the communication operator position that's housed out in the police department, a technology manager position at the library, and then an accounting position for the finance department. This was a year we were pretty austere with changes to staffing. Most of these were either upgrades to existing positions, reclassifications of ones that formerly were part-time or else ones that have a dual purpose, like allowing for some overlap for an anticipated retirement that will take place during the coming fiscal year. We have some reclassifications in other departments, like in parks, where we have two permanent part-time positions that are going to be upgraded to full-time. So they'll go from 32 hours a week to 40 hours a week. That's a fairly marginal cost for us for adding a lot of hours worth of capacity. So any questions on those? Along with the general fund, the city operates several different utilities. We've called out several of them here that we are proposing to change rates on. Sanitary sewer, as council will remember, we changed the basis of the way that we did rates in anticipation of moving to a flow-based contract with the city of Cedar Rapids. So the new budget does propose that we will add 30 cents per 100 cubic feet onto the variable charge. This is a consumption-based contract, so rather than charging a larger base monthly fee, it's a very low monthly fee, but then we charge according to consumption. Solid waste, that's of course garbage and recycling. We are proposing a $2 a month increase to that. That is more than we have done in prior years, but we're also anticipating a really significant increase in the cost of recycling coming up with a new contract with the solid waste agency. And then finally, we have the urban forest utility. This one has been, as Councilwoman Goodella pointed out, quite a few years since we have made a rate adjustment to that. So this is doing some catch-up for us to bring us into equilibrium where we have income coming in to support the expenses that we have. We knew when we created this utility that we were going to hit a point where we were going to realize some increased expenses, primarily right now driven by the response to the Emerald Ash Borer and all of those removals that we're having to do. But in the future, we'll have reforestation projects and other projects that we need to pursue out of that utility. The capital improvement project fund is the other largest fund that we have. This is where we house all of our projects, $25,000 or more. When you break it out, the projects that comprise a million dollars or more on their own, this is a listing of them. You can see we've broken them down by functional category. So the public services project is the largest driver for the equipment side. We have been delaying the replacement of fleet in a lot of those divisions in anticipation of completing the new building and then doing a conversion over to a compressed natural gas fleet to reduce maintenance and operating costs. Council's familiar with the fact that we have several major facilities under construction. So the budget would account for the anticipated completion of the fire station and then significant progress on the construction of the library. We are working on a new piece of the Indian Creek trunk sewer. As I noted on Tuesday, those are not all Marion's expenses, but we are the fiscal agent for this piece of the project. So all of the payments will get funneled through us and then we'll receive reimbursement according to the percentage shares determined by our agreement with those other communities. Trails projects, this is an area we've focused on quite a bit and have been very successful in leveraging outside funding for completing those. So the C Mar Trail continues to move through. That's a joint project with us in Cedar Rapids that will eventually lead to the connection of Uptown Marion all the way down to Cedar Rapids and Newbo. And then the 10th Avenue side paths that will create a pedestrian path all the way out to Walmart along 151. On transportation, we have quite a few street reconstructions that we're doing. These are primarily funded by local option sales tax and then continuing the construction of the last phase of Sixth Avenue between 19th and 27th Street. And then our largest annual program in that HMA, that's the acronym for hot mix asphalt. That's our asphalt overlay program. So those are funded by a variety of sources. The city's annual general obligation bond accounts for about 24% of the budget for this coming year. Local option sales tax is another major funding source at 5.63 million. We have local contributions. This would be cash on hand or money coming from operating revenues at about 5.3. Replacement funds for things like road use, that would go towards equipment replacement that we've set aside over a period of years, revenue bonds overall to comprise the budget to support the CIP. So, when you break it down according to the categories that we're buying, equipment, facility, sanitary sewer trails, the budget does contain funding for quite a few new initiatives in the course of the year. One is the implementation of the strategic plan that we've been working on. I'd already mentioned the completion of the fire station headquarters, the commencement of the library construction project. And then there's some projects that we're working on internally. Engineering is working on a pavement condition index. That will probably lead to the creation of a new acronym for the city council to get used to with the PCI index. But that's a tool that we will use to help prioritize the street conditions, set our standards and expectations for streets and help us to determine which ones need to be done first. It'll be a great planning tool for us. We are implementing a recreation software platform for the Parks and Recreation Program that will automate the ability for people to sign up for our various programs and streamline a lot of our operations. The compensation study implementation will be coming forward. We have been working towards having an update done on the master plan for the uptown. We'll be overhauling our performance evaluation system. That one's been a long time coming. Completing a growth management project, you'll get a little bit more of a briefing on that one here later on in the meeting. Improving our regional stormwater management and then we'd anticipate continued progress and ultimate completion of the public services facility. And on Tuesday, I did walk through some of the areas that were most vulnerable in the city budget to an economic downturn that would be associated with COVID response. In addition to some unanticipated expenses for things like personal protective equipment, we have also taken a strong look at our revenues that could be impacted by this. And we've developed a range of what the impact would be based on how long the duration of the economic shutdown really is. So for local option sales tax, that one has a direct relationship to consumer spending. But of all the ones that we are watching, it's also the one that's the most difficult to predict because we don't know how much consumer spending has actually tailed off versus how much of it has just moved from local spending over to online spending. And as of the last fiscal year, we will be collecting local option sales tax on online spending. So anywhere from 300 to 600,000 could be impacted over the next six months. Road use tax, this one's directly related to the amount of travel that people are doing. So we are expecting to see a significant tailing off in there as well. When we checked, the check that we'll receive in April still looks pretty strong, but there is a bit of delay in between the receipts and when we start seeing the impact of it. So we would expect that subsequent months we'll start to see a tailing off on that. Again, it really depends on how the duration of the event. Hotel motel, while we do expect to see a significant impact on this, we've also been very conservative on how we budgeted for the new revenues, not really knowing how much the new hotel was going to drive that. And so the other piece on that that will work in our favor is that a lot of the events that would have been done this fiscal year where we would have written some pretty significant checks have either been severely curtailed or canceled altogether. So we will carry a stronger fund balance in that account forward. So at this point, we're not anticipating that we're going to have to make huge adjustments for it. But we are keeping a very close eye on that and we'll continue to brief the council between now and the end of the fiscal year on how those come in. And we will look at making appropriate operational adjustments as needed.
Okay, so continuing with the public hearing and we'll come back to questions from the council when the resolution is proposed. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. So we will, at this time, ask for any comments from the public, either in favor or in opposition of this measure. Have we received any comments?
I've received three emails. They're all from Frank Sherman. He's 4170 Canton Court. And so I'll just read one at a time and then if Lon or other staff have a response, I'll allow time for that. So the first one is, "The airport committee had some recommendations for projects that needed funding at the Marion Airport. Some of those recommendations involve safety issues needing correction. What projects are funded in the 2021 budget for the airport other than the runway improvements and lighting?"
So when we put the CIP together, the projects that were initially put into it were taken, I think, directly from the ALP over a five-year period. And so when the council made some decisions that deferred or eliminated the possibility of doing those, at this point, we have not gone back and done a reranking of projects or put specific projects in there for funding consideration. I would expect over the next couple of months that we'll be working through some exercises with the airport advisory committee to come up with a specific list of recommendations for improvements that they'd like to see and in what priority order. We do have some funding from the bond that we took out for the runway renovation project that can be used to fund those. So we do have a balance that's sitting in the capital projects fund, working capital that can go towards those. But I think we need to do some work and really based on recent input from council, understand where we need to go with the ALP and have a priority order and ranking of which projects would be highest priority.
Okay. Next email?
Okay. "The Great Recession of 2008 brought about lower real estate values and slower economic growth for a number of years. Although an economic downturn caused by COVID-19 is of a different nature than the Great Recession, it appears that it will also slow economic growth and development, and it could lead to lower real estate values. Since the city has used tax increment financing as an economic development tool and TIF success is based on growth of real estate values and future development, how will this have an effect, if any, on the city's fiscal year 21 budget? What steps has the city taken in setting up and administering its TIFs to help counter the effects of a potential economic slowdown? If tax increment revenue is less than anticipated and not sufficient to service debt, what alternatives would be used to service TIF debt? Do well-crafted development agreements aid the city in dealing with a lower-than-expected tax increment revenue scenario? And would a budget amendment and internal loan from the general fund reserve be used?"
So is this a budget-specific question or it seems like it's just asking questions, which is okay. But is there a position in there for or against a budget item or I don't? Okay, Lon, would you want to address that?
Yeah, this one, I did do a fairly detailed response to Mr. Sherman and broke down the financial condition of the city's various TIF districts and really focused in on the one that is the newest and has the least financial capacity. And that one is Central Corridor. So when you look at the city's breakdown of the different districts, that's the one I think that has the most vulnerability because it's newer and just hasn't built a lot of financial capacity. But even in that district, when you look at what would have to happen, valuations would have to go backwards by more than $10 million before the city would- valuations would have to go backwards by more than $10 million before the city would be at any financial risk. And just to give you a sense of scale for what that means, that's two facilities, the size of Timberline that would just have to be completely wiped out. And that doesn't even include Timberline coming on at its full valuation yet. So one of the other questions, and I can provide the council with those breakdowns if you would like to see them. But I felt like we have really, we're in a good position with coverage for our bond debt that when you look at the districts where we have taken on and we are paying debt out of it, the amount that the city would have to move backwards and overall valuation is almost inconceivable to me. Maybe if, you know, we got 30% of the community wiped out by a tornado or something. But even during the last recession, at the worst of it, Marion never stopped actually gaining value. It certainly, the increase slowed down, but it never actually stopped. So then one of the other questions he asked was about well crafted development agreements. And this is one area where using rebate agreements in particular works in our favor. Because we write them in such a way that we rebate, say, 50% of taxes paid. So if a company's valuation goes down, the amount that they're getting rebated scales down automatically with that. And so that's one of the reasons that we write it that way. The other one, which is something that I would call emergency use only, is that these are all annual appropriation debts. Meaning that if you, as the city council, don't make a deliberate decision to include them in the budget, you don't have a legal object obligation to make that payment in that next fiscal year. That doesn't mean that you're not legally obligated to eventually make the payment, but you would have the, the option to skip a fiscal year, you've got that right reserved under the law. And so when we look at the possibility of whether or not we'd have to do a budget amendment or an internal loan, you can't ever write off that possibility. But certainly if we had to look at something like that, we could also look at doing a very short-term bridge loan of two to three years. But I really do feel like we've been very, even though we've done a lot of activity, we've been prudent in our use of tax increment, increment financing to make sure that we're not creating too much potential risk for the community.
Okay, and you have provided written response to this, as I understand it, correct Lon?
Yep.
Okay, to the questions. And so, you know, again, back to my question of, there's, there's no comment to the council whether for or against the budget or any budget items in this particular question. And you've provided written responses and there's been sufficient time for any concerns to be brought forward or anything like that. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I just, I appreciate having the opportunity to be able to clarify that for folks because I know those questions are probably out there about what does it look like if the economy really goes, goes south and wanting to make-
Absolutely, I'm, I'm, yeah, I, I'm not arguing against the, you know, you're, you're, you're providing the responses of the questions, they're great questions. And, you know, it's good to provide the information, we want everybody to have full information, no, nothing on that, I'm just, I'm just seeing if there's any, any consideration coming from Mr. Sherman to the council on the public hearing issue. So that's, that's all, I just want to clarify that and I don't, I don't see anything, it's just, it's asking for clarification and for, and for information that you've provided, correct?
Correct, all he, all he asked was questions, there's nothing stating in favor or against.
Okay, that's all, I just wanted the council to be, to be clear whether or not there was some, something being requested or advocated by, by the email. Okay, was there another email?
Yes, there's one more and I think this was answered in one of the budget presentation slides, but he said the city's budget was developed over the past several months, well before any economic fallout due to COVID-19. Does the city anticipate any loss of revenue during the upcoming budget year? If so, how will it affect city operations and how will any shortfall in revenue be covered?
Okay, did you have anything further to add to that one or is that what covered, covered in your presentation?
Yeah, that's, was, I, I believe it was covered with the slide that I did about the city's response to COVID.
Okay. Were, were there any other public comments?
No, I haven't received anything else.
That was it, okay. Lon, I do appreciate you're taking the time to answer those questions and provide the clarity on that, on all those questions. I know, I know it's, you know, it takes time to respond to, to those questions and it's important that we do. And I appreciate that you've, that you've taken the time to do that. Thank you. Okay, so if there are no more comments from the public with regard to this public hearing, we will close the public hearing and proceed to the resolution with Councilmember Cadela.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 28347, approving the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28347, which is a resolution approving the fiscal year 2020, 21 budget. Now, discussion, comments, questions for Lon from the council before we vote. Okay, seeing that there are none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving resolution number 28347, approving the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion has been approved. We have another public hearing on a proposed amendment to the Central Corridor Urban Renewal Area. The public hearing is now open and we'll ask again, city manager, if there's a presentation on this?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. For the city to be able to exercise its powers under the urban renewal statute, to do any type of agreement with a business or use TIF proceeds for our own projects, they must be specifically named in the urban renewal area. And so what, rather than doing TIF actions every time something comes up, we stack these and then do one renew amendment to the urban renewal area and then proceed to the development agreement stage. So this one has six different projects listed out in it. PDS Investments and the municipal parking lot are related to the potential relocation of Medco to a new location. Mojo Properties is for ADA improvements to the court building that Bistro 319 is now the main floor tenant is. In Seven Hills LLC is the relocation of two historic brick homes and renovations of an existing brick structure and construction of new multifamily here in the uptown area. What Do You Want LLC is the new Tommaso's building that's currently under construction at 1204. And then we're adding in the FY 2022 to 2024 administrative and professional cost recovery.
Okay, is that, is that the end of the presentation Lon?
Yes.
Okay, Rachel, are there any comments from the public? For the council, in favor or against, I'm sorry?
I have not received any comments.
Okay, so there are no comments from the public on this public hearing, please note that for the record. If there aren't any coming in, then we will just close the public hearing and move on to, to the resolution. I will, I will go ahead and turn over the meeting on the resolution to, to the Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number 28402, approving the urban renewal plan amendment for the Central Corridor Urban Renewal Area.
Second.
Steve?
I seconded it, I don't know if I was off of mute, so I apologize.
Steve's muted.
Councilman Jensen's on mute.
Can Steve be unmuted?
I mistake.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Okay, so is there any further discussion on resolution number 28402? If not, all those in favor of approving resolution number 28402, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Although, all those opposed, please say no. So that is approved. With Mayor Abu Asalee's-
Mayor Pro Tem, so I, I, I approve, except for I'm staying on Mojo. Yes. So with the rest, I do, I, I approve.
All right, note that for the record. The meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 28403, approving fiscal year 2019, 2020 capital budget transfers.
Will anyone second that?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28403, approving the fiscal year 2019, 2020 capital budget transfers. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution number 28403, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 28404, approving fiscal year 2019, 2020 operating budget transfers.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28404, approving the fiscal year 2019, 2020 operating budget transfers, discussion. Okay, we'll vote, all those in favor of approving resolution number 28404, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Mr. Brandt?
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 28405, approving contract with Tichler Bice Incorporated for consulting services related to growth management and the development of a fiscal impact model.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28405, approving contract with Tichler Bice Inc. for consulting services related to growth management and the development of a fiscal impact model, discussion?
I had a quick question.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Cadela.
Um, what was the timeline on this? Once this, you know, once things are approved, when does it start and how long do they anticipate this process take? We have this kind of ready to go, this model.
Your Honor, this process is going to be a six-months process. Staff and consultant will be developing a model for fiscal impact analysis. Um, the model is going to enhance our current development review process, putting more emphasis on fiscal sustainability, the heart of our growth management policy. And it's going to be in total alignment with the three tenants established in the comprehensive plan. Those are achieving land use balance, meaning healthy mix of tax base and minimizing growth impact and striving to achieve equity in financing infrastructure.
Thank you. Can expect this then pretty much around the beginning of 2021?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions on that item? All right, then we'll vote. All those in favor of resolution number 28405, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Councilmember Cadela?
Yes, I moved resolution number 28406, approving a memorandum of understanding between Lynn County, Cedar Rapids, Hiawatha, Marion and Robbins regarding build patients for Tower Terror Regional Project.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28406. Approving a memorandum of understanding between Lynn County, Cedar Rapids, Hiawatha, Marion and Robbins regarding the build and rise grant applications for Tower Terrace Road Regional Project, discussion. Okay, all those in favor of resolution number 28406, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Mr. Sternad?
Yes, I move to approve resolution number 28407, approving the purchase for Graybill Communications regarding surveillance cameras at City Hall in the amount of $24,383.70.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28407, approving purchase from Graybill Communications regarding surveillance cameras at City Hall in the amount of $24,393.70, discussion. Okay, all those in favor of resolution number 28407, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Motion's been approved. Councilmember Atkins?
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 28408, amending the non-bargaining pay schedule to include the addition of the library technology manager position.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 28408, amending the non-bargaining pay schedule to include the addition of the library technology manager position, discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number 28408, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. The next three items will be handled by the Mayor Pro Tem.
We now have a public hearing on the proposed development agreement with Mojo Properties LLC. This was referenced earlier, but Lon, could you again recap what this first?
Certainly. The city's economic development policies for doing ADA upgrades to historic buildings consider that to be qualified use of TIF funds because it meets public purpose by doing an upgrade to the long-term viability of historic buildings. Typically, I mean, for this to qualify, it's not as though we would only do this as a one-off project where someone could just come in and say, I want to put an elevator in. That question came up with earlier discussion, but in order to qualify, they have to be making significant improvements to their building. So with Mojo Properties, they're going to install an elevator that will make their upper floor more marketable and more accessible. The city is anticipating doing an internal loan to just reimburse them for those expenses and then we will recover those costs from the broader tax increment financing district.
Thank you. Have we received any comments from the public regarding this project?
We have not received any.
Right? So if there are no other comments from the public, we will close the public hearing and move on to the resolution.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution 28409, approving development agreement with Mojo Properties LLC, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment, increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 28409 related to the Mojo Properties. Are there any questions or comments by the city council? Hearing, I will go ahead and vote, all those in favor of approving resolution number 28409, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Resolution 28409 is approved with mayor's abstention. The meeting back to the mayor.
Oh, the next item is yours too, Steve.
Why don't you do this? All right. Go ahead, Renee.
Okay. Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number two eight four one zero, approving change order number eight with L.L. Pelling Company, Inc., regarding the 2019 runway seventeen slash thirty-five reconstruction project regarding the removal of Schedule D related to saw cut grooves and a credit amount of seventy-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-two cents.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second for resolution number two eight four one zero. Mike, you want to add some comments as to what is triggering this credit and savings?
Sure. So basically, when the hot mixed asphalt is placed, thirty days after that, then they would saw cut the grooves into it. What the grooves do is it helps for both landing and takeoffs. With the runway being shorter and not extending it to four thousand feet, the municipal airport committee felt like they didn't need it for the existing aircraft that's out there because the runway that they land on today does not have those grooves, so it's able to land on it. When they do get to the four thousand plus foot runway and they have different aircraft, then they feel that would be something that they would need at that point, but with the current aircraft fleet out there, they don't foresee that as a need, and then with the delay of the thirty days, and then we can't paint, and having the airport closed since the fall of last year, they really want to get that airport back open.
I think we do appreciate the airport commission committee looking at this, making that recommendation, so I think that is insightful. Any other questions or comments by the city council? Not, all those in favor of approving resolution number two eight four one zero, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. The resolution two eight four one zero is approved with mayor's abstention. Now I'll move the meeting back to the mayor.
Okay, thank you. We have a public hearing regarding the 2020 sanitary sewer manhole project. We'll open the public hearing and ask for presentation from the engineer.
Yeah, so this project is part of our annual program where we actually remove old brick manholes and replace them with new manholes to prevent that infiltration of that groundwater into our sanitary sewer service. This is particularly important when we're paying based on the flow that goes to the treatment plant with our agreement with Cedar Rapids. So this is nine manholes that we're replacing. We did get, if you can go to the next slide. We did get five bids that are on the screen there with the low bid from Borsh Brothers at one hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, which was ninety-six point nine percent of the engineer's estimate. Work shall commence later than July twenty-first, 2020, and be completed within four hundred and forty working days, and there are three hundred dollars per day in liquidated damages.
Okay. Thank you. Was that all you have, Mike?
Yep.
Okay. We'll ask the city clerk if any comments have been received from the public.
I have not received any comments.
Okay, we'll note for the public, for the record, that no comments were received, and we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two eight four one one, accepting bids and awarding contract to Borsh Brothers Construction Incorporated regarding the 2020 sanitary sewer manhole project in the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight four one one, accepting bids and awarding contracts to Borsh Brothers Construction, Inc., regarding the 2020 sanitary sewer manhole project in the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Discussion? I have a question for the city engineer. How does, where does this put us in terms of, you know, how many are left? What percentage would still be brick and need to be replaced after this project?
I don't have that number in front of me. I can provide that at a future date if you want that data.
No, it's, yeah, and that'd just be good to have, but is it a significant number that's left, or?
Yeah, basically, a lot of those that were done are old play lines. That's why we do our slip lining project that we'll discuss a little bit later in this manhole project. We just keep doing what we can with the money that's available. I could probably do millions of dollars worth of it per year and still not catch up, but we'll take what we can.
Okay. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number two eight four one one, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved. Councilmember Atkins?
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two eight four one two, approving contract and bond with Rachi Construction Company regarding the 2020 A Avenue Reconstruction Project in the amount of five hundred seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred forty-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
Who, who was the second from? Was that Mr. Sternad?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight four one two, approving contract and bond with Rachi Construction Company regarding the 2020 A Avenue Reconstruction Project in the amount of five hundred seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred forty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Discussion? This is the complete reconstruction of A Avenue, correct?
Yeah, from South Fifteenth to South Eleventh.
Correct. Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number two eight four one two, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Motion's approved.
Mayor, I move for resolution number two eight four one three, approving contract and bond with Rachi Construction Company regarding the 2020 Safe Routes School Project in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred six dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight four one three, approving contract and bond with Rachi Construction Company regarding the 2020 Safe Routes School Project in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred six dollars and fifty cents. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number two eight four one three, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Motion's approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two eight four one four, approving contract and bond with SAK Construction LLC regarding the 2020 Sanitary CIPP Rehabilitation Project in the amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight four one four, approving the contract and bond with SAK Construction LLC for the 2020 Sanitary CIPP Rehabilitation Project in the amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. This is the slip lining project, correct?
That is correct. The new term is in-place pipe.
All right, so we have the resolution, we have the motion and second. Is there any discussion? The session will vote. All those in favor of resolution two eight four one four, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Ms. Goodell?
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two eight four one five, approving contract with HDR Inc. for sanitary sewer capacity study in the amount of one hundred forty thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight four one five, approving the contract with HDR Inc. for sanitary sewer capacity study in the amount of one hundred forty thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution two eight four one five, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Mr. Sternad?
Mayor, I make a motion to receive, file and discuss correspondence regarding naming a creek located east of Thirty-Fifth Street, south of Willowbrook Drive, north of Willowood Avenue, and west of Squaw Creek as Willowood Creek, submitted by Brian and Toby Sonnen, thirty-five forty-five of McAllen Boulevard.
Second.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to receive, file and discuss correspondence regarding the naming of the creek located east of Thirty-Fifth Street, south of Willowbrook Drive, north of Willowood Avenue, and west of Squaw Creek as Willowood Creek. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion to receive and file and discuss, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Motion's approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two eight four one six, approving support for naming creek located east of Thirty-Fifth Street, south of Willowbrook Drive, north of Willowood Avenue, and west of the Squaw Creek as Willowood Creek to the United States Geological Services.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight four one six, approving support for naming the creek located east of Thirty-Fifth Street, south of Willowbrook Drive, north of Willowood Avenue, and west of Squaw Creek as Willowood Creek. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number two eight four one six, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to receive, file and discuss correspondence regarding full acquisition of ten thirteen, Tenth Street relating to the Tenth Avenue, Tenth Street and Central Avenue Mini Roundabout Project. This is from Karen and Doug Crane at ten thirteen, Tenth Street.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to receive, file and discuss correspondence regarding full acquisition of ten thirteen, Tenth Street in connection with the Tenth Avenue, Tenth Street and Central Avenue Mini Roundabout Project. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion to receive, file and discuss, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Mr. Brandt?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty dash zero five, approving the amendment to section one seven six point five zero dash one two to allow veterinary office slash animal hospital has a permitted use in the UTC one zoning district. Second consideration.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the second consideration of ordinance number twenty dash zero five, proving amending section one seven six point five zero dash twelve of the Code of Ordinances to allow veterinary office and animal hospital as a permitted use in the UTC one zoning district. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve ordinance number twenty dash zero five, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Motion's approved. At this time, we have another public hearing regarding the alley vacation for the east-west alley located between First and Second Avenues and Ninth and Tenth Streets. We will open the public hearing and ask our community development director, Tom Trehan, for presentation or synopsis.
Yes, as indicated, this is the, that request for an alley vacation, as indicated, it's located between First and Second Avenues and Ninth and Tenth Streets. The property owners have come forward and requested the vacation and acquisition of portion of the alley. At this point, the public hearing is regarding the vacation of the alley, and we will, if this is approved, we'll work with the owners to bring back another public hearing for the actual sale of the alley. As, as was indicated in the staff report, we've not heard much opposition to this. The alley is currently unimproved, and there's limited access to it currently by the general public. The planning commission reviewed this at their March meeting, and they have recommended approval and moving forward with the vacation of the alley, as proposed.
We'll ask the city clerk if any comments have been received.
I have not received any comments.
Okay, we'll note that for the record and close the public hearing and move on to the resolution.
Yes, your honor, I move to approve resolution number two eight four one seven, approving the alley vacation for the east-west alley located between First and Second Avenues and Ninth and Tenth Streets. This is on behalf of Brandon Turbaum.
Second.
It's, it has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight four one seven, proving the alley vacation for the east-west alley located between First and Second Avenues and Ninth and Tenth Streets. Discussion? So as, as Mr. Trehan stated, this would just be vacating the alley so that it's no longer a public alley. It would still be public property until there's an agreement for the sale to the adjacent owners, but it's just no longer an alley and hasn't been used as an alley in any case, but just to be clear. Any discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number two eight four one seven, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. We have another public hearing for another alley vacation. This is for the north-south alley located between Tenth and Eleventh Avenues and Twenty-Sixth and Twenty-Seventh Streets. We'll open the public hearing and again ask Mr. Trehan for an explanation.
Sure, yes, your honor. The, as indicated, and as previously, this talked about in the previous public hearing, the city has received a request to vacate an alleyway. As you can see from the illustration, it was identified in the staff report, there's limited access to this alleyway as well, and it's really an unimproved area. The owners have brought forth a request to vacate the alley. At this point, we would be moving forward on the vacation and would work with owners to acquire portions of the alley and bring that back for public hearing. The planning commission did review this at their March, and is recommending that we also move forward with approval of the vacation.
Okay, thank you. We'll ask the city clerk if any comments have been received.
Did receive one. It's from Mike Schaefer, who lives at ten seventy, Twenty-seventh Street, which I believe is an adjoining property, and he is in favor of the vacation.
Okay, and that was the only comment we received?
Yes.
Okay. Then we will close the public hearing and proceed to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two eight four one eight, approving the alley vacation for the north-south alley located between Tenth and Eleventh Avenues and Twenty-Sixth and Twenty-Seventh Streets. This will be Mitchell Sutton.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two eight four one eight, approving the alley vacation for the north-south alley located between Tenth and Eleventh Avenues and Twenty-Sixth and Twenty-Seventh Streets. Again, just as with the prior alley vacation, this would just reclassify the, the space from an alley to just public land that is owned by the public until there's a decision on any sale to neighboring adjacent property owners. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of resolution number two eight four one eight, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Atkins?
Your honor, I move to approve ordinance number two zero dash zero four, amending chapter twenty-one of the Code of Ordinances relating to library board of trustees. This is the final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the third and final consideration of ordinance number twenty dash zero four, amending chapter twenty-one of the Code of Ordinances relating to the library board of trustees. Discussion? All those in favor of ordinance number twenty dash zero four, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Motion is approved. At this time, we have a public forum that is set aside for comments from the public on any, any topic and would ask the city clerk if we've, if we've received any.
I have not received any comments.
Okay. All right, so this brings us to the end of our open session. I will ask briefly if there are any comments from the council. Please indicate whether or not you, you have any comments to make, Ms. Gadeala.
Yes, two quick ones. The first is to thank Rachel for the way that we received the information and for our meeting prep. I think that, at least for me, the one drive was a lot easier than the separate emails. So hopefully everyone else found it to be better or at least the same for them, and we can continue that way. But thank you for doing that, being so responsive, and I just thought that was easier. And then the second is just to mention that today I went into my work in Davenport, and I actually ran into a couple of coworkers who were in briefly like me. And it was so nice to see people, like I didn't realize how nice it was to just see, I mean, I love my family, but just see people other than my family. You know what I mean? And then it made me think that you guys in our meeting tonight, and, you know, I really miss seeing y'all in person, and Robin, and Charlie, and Frank, and our regulars. And so hopefully we'll be back at that soon. But I'm just wanted to say I miss you guys. That's it, thanks.
Any other council members have comments? I would just add my thanks to the city staff for all their hard work in continuing the services to the public in this less than ideal time and while working from home and, or many of us, many of us working from home and not being able to actually be in the, you know, in physical proximity of each other to confer on things. I commend them for having daily meetings electronically to keep each other informed and to stay in good communication with each other. I want to thank all the residents of Marion. You know, we're all impacted in one way or another by this crisis and, you know, want everyone to know that I and the city council and city staff are thinking of everyone. We want our city to come out of this in the best shape as possible. We're working hard to continue providing services and to look forward to, to recovery. It's going to take a lot of patience from everyone, and I appreciate that. I appreciate everybody's kindness that they've expressed towards other people. All the people who have stepped forward to find ways that they can help in this situation and to be part of the solution. And we have announced, as of late last week, that we were forming a recovery task force, which is intended to start to look at what the, what the needs are and to try to address those issues, to make recommendations to the city council, to other decision makers, to match up resources with, with where the needs are in the community, both with individuals as well as businesses. And to start to take a look at what it will look, you know, how it will look, you know, when we do start to get back to normal activities, what that will look like and what adjustments we have to make. And so that we can be proactive and be prepared and help our city to reignite our, our momentum. So would appreciate any thoughts people have on that. Any ideas are welcome. I and the city council and the city manager and the city staff are all accessible and willing to listen and take ideas and, and, and comments. So this, this, this has to be a community-wide effort, and we all have to work together. And I have no doubt that, that we will. With that, we have a closed session this evening, and we will be adjourning this session after the motion and then going into closed session. So, Mr. Jensen, will you make the motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn to closed session regarding land acquisition as permitted under section twenty-one-point-five-one-J of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding land acquisition as permitted under section twenty-one-point-five-one-J of the Code of Iowa. May we have the attorney's opinion on this, please?
Your honor, I have reviewed the motion to adjourn to, sorry, I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section twenty-one-point-five-one-J.
Thank you. If there's no comments or discussion, we will do the roll call.
Ms. Atkins?
Yeah.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mayor Abu Osley?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Gadeala?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes.
Okay, before we adjourn the open session, the city clerk will explain what the process is for returning the open session or this, this session will remain open? Or how's that going to work?
Correct. Our IT director will stay, keep the meeting open and will let us know if there's any attendees left in the meeting when we adjourn the closed session.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you to all who have joined us and have a good evening.
Does anybody know, are we doing the closed session this way, or are we supposed to sign out and come back in?
I think, I think we need to leave this meeting and, and go into the Teams meeting. There was a, a team.
That one?
The Teams invite, and that's where the closed session is.
Okay, all right.
How was that sent? I'm not, I don't, was that a separate email or was it on the same one as this panelist?
I think it was a calendar invite.
Rachel. Rachel sent it out.
I don't know if I see it either.
I don't see it.
Oh, Rachel resend it.
Did she just send it today?
Do I have to sign out? I'm trying to get access to it.
Yeah, you'll sign out of this.
Just leave the meeting?
Yep, you leave the meeting, I'll stay on.
Okay, very good.
Yep, then you can re-enter to open session after the closed session. I'll just leave this open. You just use the link that you used to begin with to come back in here.
Okay. And somebody, you're going to have Rachel resend the link?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Terrell. See you on the other side.
Okay.